Hey Larry. Brought a familiar face with me.
Thank you, Chris.
Gave you a good recommendation. John is the Zoom user.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to start yet, Sally?
Uh, yes, we are.
Okay, well, I certainly welcome you all to come to this work session. Tonight, we're gonna, we can revise the schedule, we're gonna have the work session first so that we got some other stuff we gotta do. That's just kind of, it'll eventually come to you guys anyway. But Sally, do you have, who's gonna present this from Womack and Charis?
Yes, yes, I do. Would you like me to go ahead and do the introductions?
Yeah, cuz yeah, the first item on this revised is work session, so we might as well start it. And you guys can chime in if you want, something you wanna ask for that. Keep in mind, when this does come back to us in the form of a regular meeting to the council and planning, it will be quasi judicial, so kinda keep that in mind as we're going through this. But no, go ahead and introduce folks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Devoe. I would like to introduce to you the consultants that have been working with Charis Bible College and Andrew Womack Ministries. They are consultants from NES and John Romero is here to kick us off. Or, oh, Chris, Chris Lieber is going to start. And let me know when you'd like your slides to be shown.
Sally?
Yes?
Chairman, just as a point of disclosure, I have known the applicant, not the applicant, excuse me, the consultant, to the applicant for about thirty years. Chris and I have worked together for a long time, working for the city of Colorado Springs. And then after that, we worked on several projects after that, so I just wanted to disclose that, that we have that information. Impartial decision. Eventually. Participate in words.
Great. Well, thank you. Again, my name is Chris Lieber, I'm with NES and Larry, your comment about thirty years is dating me, so. But. But first of all, good evening, and I wanna say thank you for the opportunity to really share this, this, this vision plan. This is our first, really, opportunity to share, really, the future outlook, the future vision for Andrew Womack Ministries and the Charis Bible College. And as Larry alluded to, certainly, again, I'm Chris Lieber with NES and we're land planning landscape architecture firm. We're located down in Colorado Springs and we're here, of course, on behalf of Andrew Womack Ministries and the Charis Bible College. As part of my team tonight, John Romero is, is with me and I'll be inviting John to kinda handle the bulk of our presentation tonight. But our role in this process, NES's role, has been to provide professional guidance, professional support, or support to both AWM and to Charis, really throughout a process that has gone on about, about a year. And it's been an opportunity, I think, for both AWM and Charis to really think about the future, their future as a campus, their presence really on that property. And so what we're bringing forward today is still very much in draft form, but it gives you, I think, a good sense of where they aim to go, really, over time. We've been privileged to work with a, a large team at AWM and at Charis throughout the creation of this draft vision. And several of those members that have put a lot of work into this are with us tonight. Andrew Wertz is here tonight, Chris Sees. We also have Eileen Quinn and John Reich, so certainly delighted again to share this kind of collective vision. Along the way, at key points, we've also had, I think, really good conversations with Sally Riley and Dave Burgess. And so thank you for making them available and I have to say Sally and I have also known each other for, let's say, twenty, twenty-five years. And, um, and I, I heard a rumor that you are retiring, we're all gonna miss you, Sally, so. But we very much appreciated, I think Sally's guidance and David's as well throughout this process. So again, we're, we're here just to share this draft vision tonight, and I wanna emphasize that this is, again, AWM and Charis's vision. And it's, as, as a vision, it's very intentional, it's cohesive, it's thoughtful. And again, it's really meant as a tool that focuses on perhaps future land use moves and future land use decisions. And that vision primarily is, is for that of a campus, of a unified campus that fits well into the greater, larger woodland park in Teller County context, as well as a, as a vision for a campus that fits well into the natural setting that, that is there on that, that property specifically. And, and so it is, I wanna emphasize also that this, this document is not intended to be kind of, if you think from an entitlement perspective, a land use master plan or, or a PUD, it's, it's meant to be a higher level. It's meant to kind of create and think even longer term in some ways of, and we know very clearly that for this vision to be realized, there will be a whole series of entitlement steps that, that would be ahead in, in this process. And so in many ways, this is kind of like a sneak peek or an early, early look at what intent and the future might be. I also wanna emphasize that we believe, and one of the reasons that we strongly encouraged Andrew Womack Ministries and Charis to move forward with the vision plan, because we believe it's a very useful tool in providing a framework for the future, and it gives, gives the, both the college and the ministry, as well as the community, an opportunity to start thinking about and having conversations about, about really important topics, such as student housing, such as, well, what does that mean both for the campus and perhaps what does it mean for, for the community? What does that mean in terms of availability or ultimately maybe even cost affordability within the community? We think it's a great place to, to have a conversation about things that maybe sound a little simple but are important, but trail connections and open space connections, how do those, those pieces come together? It also provides a real high-level framework to think about future utility connections and utility demands, and so all of those pieces. So while this vision is absolutely and very much specific to the, to the ministry and to the college, we think it's equally important from a community framework and, and thinking about those possibilities really collectively as we move forward. So at this point, again, thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to turn this over to John Romero, who's a landscape architect here with our NES firm, so thank you.
Good evening. Thank you again for participating with this tonight. I wanted to first start off again and talk a little bit about what Chris had mentioned, is that the goal tonight is just get feedback and thoughts on the document, right? This, as Chris mentioned, is a document, a vision for AWM Ministries and Charis Bible College. And it's largely focused on the growth of the vision moving forward. The intent of this document is to set an understandable narrative for development, for thoughtful planning, and also serve as a segue for questions for the campus's vision as we move forward. We do not intend, as Chris said, for this development to set any standards. It is, again, just a vision plan and give kind of a pathway to understand how that growth will work in the document. As we go through this, I, you're welcome to ask questions, I'd like to just go through it, kinda present the document to you guys, talk a little bit of how we got to where we did, and just discuss kind of from a high level where we're at with the document and the different parts and pieces. So with that, let's go ahead and skip ahead.
Little trapezoids, bookmarks?
It's possible, I don't know. It might be if under the contents, why don't you go ahead and, let's skip ahead. I'm fairly familiar with it, so let's go ahead and skip ahead, Sally, to page eight. Has everybody had a chance to look at or have a copy of it? If not, I have a couple extra copies if, if needed to, so. All right, so again, what is a vision statement? A vision statement is intended to represent an organization's way of identifying a set, set core values. A cohesive vision statement helps ensure the essence of the core values are preserved and flexible. So early on, as Chris mentioned, we met with AWM and Charis and talked a little bit about kind of their involvement with the community and specifically the development community and how they're working forward. And we talked a lot about strategies of working within the current PUD and how we move forward. So initially, when we looked at that, we noticed that there were some, some challenges in that, right? The current Sherman PUD was set up largely for an industrial park development, which, you know, under the purview of what the current development is, it just doesn't make sense. So we looked at, how do we work within that and how do we move forward effectively to create a good partnership with the development community? So that there's a clear knowledge of what the idea is for growth. So from that meeting, we decided to kind of set out a vision and decide, you know, let's collaborate and talk about the gaps that need to be addressed. Let's address the different gaps in the PUD plan and in development, and how do we move this forward in a way that's effective from this point moving forward? Then the next piece was looking about, let's start to identify, as you see, capacities and constraints. With any development, whether it be industrial, mixed commercial, anything residential, there's capacities and constraints to development that lead, that are from infrastructure, from grading, from topography, current city code, all of those things. Understanding that and starting to take all those different things and putting it together with what they have envisioned in their mind for the property. And then from that, we looked at strategies, how do we develop this vision? Once we understand those different capacities, understand the vision of what they want, and then just look at how we move this forward in an effective way for a plan that makes sense to everybody. And then obviously where we're at now, creating the vision. We wanted to look at the different themes and key components of the vision that helped set the framework for that. The goal ultimately, as again, was, as mentioned, was to look at a way to create a transparent process for everybody to think about how we move forward in an effective way. As, as we kinda came to work with the, the group in the team, we noticed there was challenges in how they move forward with certain projects, right? And again, it was because of that PUD process and what that meant. And so it seemed as if the best way to do things was instead of trying to work within the framework of that current PUD, is look at ways to amend that. But prior to doing that, it made sense to explore kind of the larger picture. Go ahead and skip to the next page. So as we started to kind of work through the document and the different pieces, we started thinking about, what are the related plan policies and studies? Obviously, you just adopted your 2020 plan, which is great, or 2021 plan, which is great, and got a chance to look through that. And that identified some changes in character for that development itself, too. That likely will probably find its way in here now, that that's been adopted and kind of refer to that. But we looked at the original 2019, 2022 strategic plan. We took time to look at the different market analysis. Charis has yearly, or not yearly, but recently updated their economic fiscal impact report, so we have that in there. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that, and that was actually also shared recently at their open house. We took a chance to look at the affordable housing assessment, you know, as discussed, there's a lot of challenges with the, the PUD and the current development of how we deal with housing, that's always seemed to be a constant question that, you know, we talked about with Sally and some other people. We looked at the circulation plan, that's key to this, there's a lot of key documents in this in regards to the housing needs, the circulation, so on and so forth. And then again, the, the PUD plan, as mentioned. There has been other documents kind of in the interim that have worked for the development to kind of try to address certain things, which helped address the current sanctuary and the larger building and the parking garage. But again, there's, there comes points where we have to advance those documents, right? And think about things from a larger perspective. Next page. Keep going. So part of our due diligence outside of the studies was also looking at existing conditions, right? We're, we're in a unique climate here, unique topography, unique natural areas. So we wanted to look at the topography, the hydrology, forest management. Look at all these different things that, that need to be thought about when you start thinking about these land use pieces and development as a whole. Circulation facilities, facilities, again, as Chris mentioned, was for us to look at the infrastructure of the, of the current development, what the capacities were of that, and what kind of the limiting factors may or may not be, or where, where improvements need to be made from that. With that, we had key takeaways, which hopefully you've gotta look at, which is talk about, you know, things to think about in the future as they develop. There's key items that they need to think about in regards to circulation from the topography, multimodal options, and what that means for a campus, right? And we can keep moving, Sally. Go one more page. So as we started to gather all this information between the different studies, the capacities, that the topography, all these different items, we started to then work with the ministry and we said, all right, let's sit down, let's talk a little bit about kind of what the grand vision is. We had a chance to sit with Andrew, Chris Sees, and a couple other people from the team, and really challenged them to put on the paper what they thought the ultimate vision was. What, what do you hope for, for the campus at the end of the day? And then let's have a dialogue, right? So we sat down and we basically got dots, put them on a paper and just started placing them around and said, let's look at this. Let's understand what that means from that perspective and really challenge them to put kind of this bigger picture perspective on paper. Cuz, you know, it's, they've talked a lot about it, and I think that what we found is Andrew has a vision in his head, and I think it's a grand vision, but to communicate that to people is sometimes hard, right, without a document, to really say, here's what we think and what, what we hopeful for, for the property. So we really challenged him and his team to sit down and I, I identify those items. From there, we took those documents and we started looking at, as you can see, walking distance studies, for instance. We looked at trail access and improvement, parking needs, what do all these uses mean to the development? When you start thinking about all these different items and got a chance to talk to them a little bit about what that would mean, you know? What does that mean if you have a student housing piece over here and a student rec center over here? What does that mean for transportation? How do you get to and from those places? What does it mean to serve those? What are the needs for parking? How does that start to, you know, formulate that plan moving forward? We can keep going. All right, and then, as you see, we kinda moved into the goals. We, we had all this information, started looking at everything and said, okay, how do we start thinking about the goals for this vision plan? What are we trying to achieve? So through a couple different iterations, we landed at four goals. Goal one was to create a strategic and cohesive vision to shape future Charis Bible College campus growth that aligns with the mission of Andrew Womack Ministries. So the thought there in that goal was that for any vision to be successful, successful, we have to think about alignment. Alignment of budgets, alignment of anticipated growth, and understanding how that alignment between the Bible College and the ministry really could come together to form a campus. And that was one of the kind of initial goals from a, from a very early time that we, we thought was very important. And with each goal, you'll see as I'm going through, we started looking at those goals and saying, well, what can we do to achieve those? What are some early action items? And what are some objectives to doing that, to kind of set a framework for that path to achieve each goal? So you'll see in each one, we had these different early action items. You know, for instance, on this, we thought that it was very important to prioritize potential campus facility and amenity improvements. What does that mean in the perspective of the two uses? And how do those two things become cohesive and create that alignment? And then number two, as you can see, determine budget demands for future construction projects. It's important to their type of ministry and their, their group and, and Bible college to understand that, right? I think you've heard a few times, Andrew is very cognizant of what that means from a financial perspective and how he can repay that before he does different things and deal with those different budgets. So that's important to their, to their group. Identify needs for future growth and future development implementation. And then utilize this vision document, as we mentioned, as a communication tool for community engagement to foster fluid application of development and implementation strategies. Again, that you'll see throughout this document is the key thing. How do we create a vision that we can share with everybody so that there's an understanding of a path forward? And then again, objectives, again, you'll see with each one, we looked at, how do we support those, those different goals? And those are all in there with each, with each goal. Goal two, and you probably skipped ahead one. Goal two was to invest in infrastructure, facilities and amenities that support the strategic growth while acknowledging established woodland park community and preserving the natural beauty of the region. And this is something I think that you guys are all really well aware of, is capacities, right? We talk a lot about water, we talk a lot about what that means for, you know, taps and what we need to do to kind of achieve these different developments. It's, you know, it's intrinsic to most development, but it's something you have to think about. So we took a lot of time to look from a very high level. What do we need? What is this gonna require for water? What is this gonna require for improvement, infrastructure, improvements to infrastructure that maybe aren't on the project? What do we need to think about connecting water lines, sewer lines, roadway improvements, those types of things again? And again, establish early action items, which we think will support that. A lot of that, too, when you think about the different infrastructure and facilities, is thinking about entitlement and the construction schedules for, you know, those different things. We identified in this, even to a higher level of infrastructure, high priority housing sites, which I know that we've talked a lot about, or you've talked a lot about as a community and what that means for woodland park and, and AWM. We looked at upgrading road cross-sections, looking at multimodal options, considering adding bicycle lanes to support those. Again, how do we do these different things to kind of invest in that infrastructure and facilities as a whole to make it a great functioning campus? Can move forward to goal three. Goal three, enhance the identity of placemaking of Charis Bible College. This is, this was a fun one. I don't know, when we first met with the group, we had to explain placemaking, right? Cuz I think placemaking is a lot different when you think about it from a planning perspective, right? And so, but I think we all found kind of a common alignment of what that meant. And the idea behind placemaking is that we wanted to create connectivity that focuses on the desire to create unique spaces. And especially when you think about that in the, in the perspective of a campus, you think about a campus that people come to, they're excited to be, they feel like they're safe there, they feel like they can walk around it, it becomes something that you remember, right? There's different ways to do that and different ways to create a facility that we thought that would be multifaceted and cohesive. So we started to look at different ways to do that. And one of the items that we thought about is part of placemaking, is thinking about architectural standards and design guidelines for buildings and improvements moving forward. And again, we talked about the increase in the multimodal options. The idea behind that, in any sense, it had, with it being in our mind multifaceted, again, it gives people a common connection between items that they feel like they can walk, bike, drive, there's all these different ways to deal with that. We talked about developing a pedestrian plan that takes into account future enrollment. Again, having these, these different facilities to create this nice place has to have functioning multimodal options so people can kind of traverse the area and visit. And we'll move forward to go for. Goal four, and an important one, we thought it, goal four was to engage the local community to foster mutually beneficial growth opportunities and partnerships between the campus and greater community. One of the things that I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with this, that we identified early on, is that it'd be important for Charis as a campus and faculty to establish a P3 task force. Look at these different ways to kind of communicate that perspective with everybody and create that transparent process that we were talking about. And that, again, is an early action item that we, we had identified. We also talked about how do, how do we foster this beneficial growth opportunity with everybody? Cuz there's impacts when you think about a vision plan and a lot of different ways, what that means to the communities that you're in, correct? So we wanted to look at updating the revised plan unit development plan that supports that vision moving forward. Doing that, it's working within the different jurisdictional requirements and understanding how that growth will impact the community that you're in and what that means from a perspective of the land that, that you're utilizing to. Another key item that we thought that was important to that, too, in thinking about the larger impacts, is that continuing to collaborate with the fire department on emergent, and, and the police department on emergency access plans. That's important. Charis has worked really hard to create some of those documents and have some of those in place now. And have, again, with that P3 task force, which inadvertently, I think they already have in place, is look at what are the different impacts to the community and what they need to serve security on their site? To think about emergency evacuation and those different items. Can move forward, Sally. And ultimately, this led to the vision and the goal of kind of putting kind of this large-scale understanding of where we were. We got an opportunity to sit down and really kind of put pen to paper and look at, what are these different things that would make the vision plan and the, the campus as a whole unique? Where, how do we create a campus, the north? You know, we started to refer to it as the north and south campus, where Trout Creek would really split that. But looking at the function of how those two things intermingled. As you know, the ministry building is on the, the Sherman property, and that's currently there. And then we have the Bible College on what we're calling the south campus. And starting to look at kind of the function and the, the intent of these different things so that we could create that cohesiveness. Looked at creating student promenades, trail connections and trail opportunities, as Chris mentioned, that could kind of link things, both public and private, and see how we could utilize those for multimodal options. Started looking at housing, housing is key. I think that we've seen and heard that there's been a strain on the, the housing market, and how do we address that? And with this, you know, we looked at, how can we facilitate the growth that they anticipate with the different housing options? And what does that mean? You know, through that process, we identified probably two or three different housing needs that we could address. And one of those early on was, you know, transitional housing. When you get new staff, you get new students, when they're looking for a place to live, do we have something on the facility that maybe we can look at that deals with transitional housing? Do we have the housing needs for students? And then also addressing, in that same vein, the different types of students. I think right now, if I'm not misspeaking, their average student age is about forty years old, but they're seeing that trending a different way. So seeing the different needs for the housing and the different age groups is understanding, will help us better understand what those housing needs are and how we can identify those on the, on the development. Cuz again, you know, some people have families, some are young students and maybe they don't, so identifying those different housing needs. Started looking at amenities, student activity centers, student village. We talked about a student village, unique to a lot of campuses is sometimes you need a place to buy books. Maybe get a quick snack, do those different things that you can have on campus. And also, you know, utilize some of those things to think about the impacts of traffic so people can kind of stay in the development for those kind of short-term things there, as you're kind of moving forward. And with that, I, you know, that, that's about where we landed with everything. And at this point, I'd love to kind of hear your thoughts and ideas on this. What I, what I do wanna point out is that the very end of the document, AWM and Charis recently updated their economic impact report. And I think that sheds a lot of great light on kind of some of the different ways that they bring tax, tax dollars to the community. They've, they spent a lot of time, and I'll, I'll try not to get too far off cuz I'm not an economic expert, but they, they spent a lot of time looking at the, the different housing benefits that comes from students that come here. They looked at sales tax from different growing communities, visitors who live, who live here, work here, and then people that visit and shop in the community. They looked at jobs, the jobs that they, they created in those different pieces, too. So it's a great report that I know is available if everyone wanna look at it. But definitely, if you'd want, let us know and we, we can share that with you. So with that, I'd love to ask, love to answer any questions and really just get your feedback. Because again, the idea behind this, as we talked about, is to create a good perspective moving forward for development. The hope is that this sets framework for that. The hope is that this sets framework for that PUD amendment, which we know we need to all address and um, start to think about the campus as a whole moving forward. But it seemed prudent as a team to kind of first share that vision before we just kind of drop this big chain. It's a large property. It seems important to kind of talk about this and think about the different things that we've evaluated and discussed before we kind of put that plan into place. Thank you. Questions or? And I, I encourage you guys, I, me and Sally have had a really good dialogue and just talked very openly about things. And so I think that's, that's the best way for us to kind of move these things forward, ask questions. Is there gaps? Is there things that we can identify? And strengthen. And again, this is the vision plan. It's a high level, just kind of, kind of set a framework for development moving forward. But um, definitely would appreciate your feedback. And I know that the ministry and the Bible college would too.
Mr. Chairman, Carol Harvey here, if I may be recognized.
Go ahead, Carol.
Thanks. Uh, just a couple of observations. I really appreciate that you've incorporated in, in your effort for the vision plan. Incorporated the, the city's foundation plans. What coordination did you do with the surrounding area, specifically Westwood Development and the hospital as well?
We honestly have not had direct discussions with them. Most of the stuff that we've had has been usually through Sally. And so we did have, um, I think it was about a month ago, we were able, we had asked Sally, um, Michael and a group of the, from the planning department, Kip Riley, the police, the fire chief was there? Or the police chief?
Police.
Chief of police and sat down and that was kind of some of our early engagements. It kind of talked to them about the vision, what we were thinking. Kind of get some feedback, but unfortunately we did not have that discussion, but always open to those kinds of things.
Um, a couple of other uh, observations as well. Um, in the vision plan and the document itself, you talk about shipping and distribution operations. Where are those located now or, and are they included in a future build out of the campus?
So all of those are, I, those are within the ministry itself. Um, so the ministry itself, and please correct me if I'm wrong with this, they have a um, component of that where Andrew sends out his free documents, um, his um, tapes, his books. And they have that within the ministry building. I don't know that there's, I have not heard that there's um, any sort of desire to increase that. Um, but that, yeah, so.
And then finally, um, without um, uh, impinging upon our future PUD discussions. Um, have you looked at the pros and cons of privatization of the student housing?
Yes, and I think that's, it's been an ongoing discussion, right? And so as we move forward, we'll discuss that more. But currently the thought is, is that we'll keep it within the, within the ministry's purview. And so look at other ways to provide other housing options.
So no lean towards privatizing housing at all?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, thank you.
The, the one piece that there is still in discussion is that um, we looked at that transitional housing area and what that really means. Um, and so that's, that's the one piece that we've still kind of discussed. What is, what, how does that work? How do we think that functions? And Sally had asked that early on, is that for rent project or product? Or is that something where there'll be individual lot sales? So that's still something that we've, we've kind of looked at evaluating in the future as we get to those projects.
John DeVoe on planning, I got a question. Do you have a timeline when you're just going to see this thing? Uh, build out or what, what's your, what's your plan and where do you start and where do you end up?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. So there, there is no current plan for full build out, right? So this is again a vision, but there is um, a strong desire to provide housing and we're working on that now. But prior to doing that, um, we wanted to get this in place. There is the current amendment on the south campus that does have a PUD approved for housing for I believe five hundred units. And that's kind of where we want to start. I don't think we're looking at the full five hundred. But we want to start with that piece of the property and start working on that, then kind of work with the bigger piece of the pie, which is the larger PUD.
Very good. Thank you.
Just a small correction. It's five hundred bedrooms.
Bedrooms, yes.
Three hundred.
Yes, thank you. Yes.
Anybody else have questions?
This is Kelly Case from the council. Uh, Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
Thank you, John. Um, I guess my question is, um, I think that, I don't know, in the back of my mind is access.
Yep.
Um, right now, um, I know there's the back access to Evergreen Heights Drive where I happen to live on that, on that street.
Yeah.
Um, and I know that there's some vision for some, um, going back behind Meadowwood Park at some point in the future. Sally has shared with me. Um, and so I see congestion already going in and out of the single access point with a light on twenty-four. Is that part of your vision? Is that something that you all um, see a plan for? Or because I know you have, there's a, there's an option to access maybe twenty-four again, but that's huge and that's C dot. And may or may not be an option.
Right.
If you could share anything that you have in the vision about that.
So from the very beginning, that was one of the very first things that we addressed and we, we kind of um, wanted to gather all of our information before we really kind of addressed that. But we did have a chance to talk um, early on or recently with Sally and her team, Kip. And got to discuss what that meant for the, the project. And one of the big pieces that we talked about was a connection to Sturman Parkway. Um, and I think we've all agreed that that connection is necessary. And so now we started talking about from that, what, what does that mean in the purview of the development? How do we move that forward and how do we do, deal with traffic control and management? So that is something that we've looked at. And part of that too was within this vision, as you can see, there's a lot of different housing options. There's improvements for the student activities, center, those types of things. That's where that multimodal piece really came in is how do we keep the on-campus um, activities on campus? So that it doesn't burden things outside on the city. So that was part of that too. But as, again, as we move forward, um, that'll be something that we'll, we'll address as we go through the different developments. I do know that um, there is intent to move forward with Sturman Parkway um, in the near future. We want to kind of identify this first housing option, but then as we move into the second housing option, which is really where we'd hope to start. Um, we realized that we have to identify um, the amendment to the PUD. And so that's a process, correct? So we wanted to work within kind of the purview of the approvals that we have and then deal with the bigger picture, which will likely connect Sturman Parkway.
One number I did not see addressed in the, the plan was what is the final build out or not build out, but final enrollment? Um, objective for the college.
So um, recently at the open house and I'll try not to get these numbers wrong, but there has been, they, they studied that, right? And they looked at it from a twenty-year perspective. I think the current enrollment is it, is it around eight hundred? And I think that we're ended up around the two thousand and twenty years, right? What was the twenty-year perspective? Yeah, okay.
Two thousand or four thousand?
Yeah. A, and this is a twenty-year kind of view. And so that's what they started to look at kind of from that perspective, but right now they're at eight hundred.
I asked that question when you, you compare it to the actual population of the city of Woodland Park. That's um, that's quite a.
And then part of that that's key is, again, that's, that we start to look at with this document capacity is right. And that's where we start to look at what can we do with housing? What can we do with the current facilities? And how does that direct some of this development moving forward?
Well, those questions will definitely come up in the application process.
Absolutely.
Sally, is this being streamed? Yes. Okay. Then it would be a good idea maybe if we, oh, they do have a microphone. Excellent. David, thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Robert Zuluwak, Willim Park Council. Um, I was very happy to see, I did go to the open house a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago. Time passes quickly. Uh, it was good to see the um, economic impact to the city. And um, I know I'd like to see the full detail of that.
Absolutely.
But the part that um, that I hear from the community that I'd like you to address is that addresses the whole issue of, oh, Charis doesn't pay um, property tax. And doesn't contribute as a five oh one C three. But the value that you're laying out here, um, I think is demonstratable. And so the other area that I'd like you to talk about is on infrastructure, on wastewater, on water. And the, the services that the city has already um, has that structure in place. But can you talk about the impact on that and what the city can expect?
Yeah. So I'm going to caveat this with a couple of things. Um, first of all, I'm not an economist, so I'll try to do my best to blow this, but kind of the short version of this is I think that this economic and fiscal impact report shows that other ways that they, as a five oh one C three can provide benefit to the city of Woodland Park through different sales tax options, um, through jobs, through housing, through um, salaries. Um, home purchases, those types of things. Um, also people visiting, people coming to, that live here as part of the, the ministry that, that shop in the stores, you know, that contribute in that, in that, in that aspect. So that's, that's kind of, kind of the brief summation of that. And it, I will definitely um, work with their team if anybody would like to see that. It was shared at the open house and the gentleman who presented did a great job presenting that. Um, but that is something they have said they're willing to share. And um, if you haven't got a chance to see that presentation, we can get your emails through Sally and make sure we forward that. In regards to the infrastructure, that part there is, that's interesting too, because to really i- identify infrastructure, we have to look at it from an actual design perspective, right? But so the I, the items that we identified in this report were things that we knew, right? We looked at what we can do within the purview of the current PUD and the current water taps that are available and what that means for them on this current housing project. What is, what is available? What do they need to do from a, a development perspective to increase their wastewater, their sewer li- uh, water mains, those types of things? Cause there has been improvements that have recently happened. So as those projects come, that'll continue to be something that they have to investigate and will continue to do as each development.
Can we make a formal request then to get a copy, a hard copy of that um, document, the impact assessment?
And, and is that impact assessment the basis for the economic impacts in Woodland Park and Teller County? Because I'm very curious as to how those numbers were developed.
Yeah, absolutely.
We would, uh, I'm, I'm Andrew Wertz, by the way. I'm the senior vice president for AWM and Charis. And I also wanted to introduce Mike Pickett, who's the vice president of Charis Bible College, along with his wife, Carrie Pickett. Um, as far as the economic uh, impact review, we, we would love the opportunity to present that to you. That would be a possibility. Uh, Michael Verdom was the economist that did that for us. He presented at our open house and we could do a short form uh, of that presentation to you all. And, and he could field the questions for the methodology and how, how they looked at all of the data.
But you cannot provide the actual document to us? Is it proprietary?
No, it's, it's not proprietary. We can provide it to you.
Yeah, that would be my, my request. Absolutely. I'd, that's, I, I have a background in that. And so I, I'm very curious as to how this was developed. Thank you.
I would encourage if you get an opportunity to have Michael present, it's, it's a great, he did a great job.
I'd, I'd like to have that as well, but I'd like to have the, I'm old school.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll, we'll make it available to everybody.
My request would be for the planning commissioners and for the city council members.
Sure. One of the things, if you, if you can hear me, I'm going to put in another two cents worth, is that with our little retail shop downtown. We've kind of enjoyed watching this take place over the years that, uh, that's growing out there. We, we've just had so many people and especially the conferences, because the conferences bring in a huge amount of folks and families that come along. And we have just absolutely enjoyed people from all around the world, all around the country that come in and do that. I don't know if those numbers are in there, but they, they, they certainly make a difference.
Yeah, I think if you look at the document, there is a piece in there that, that there's a short form and they talk about event and visitor spending throughout the next, through twenty thirty and they target that from two million to five million, just from the event.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a uh, a series of random thoughts that I, that I would like to share. Sorry. Thank you, Catherine. I always forget. I'll just kind of rattle through the.
Please.
Some things, uh, I'll have questions. Some, some will just be my, my thoughts.
Okay.
And I, I also appreciate that uh, th- this particular document will evaluate the envision of Woodland Park, how best to plan. That's very important. There's some very important information.
Yep.
In that plan, that's going to be very relevant to your project.
Yep.
So please take a look at that and address that.
Yep. Got a chance to look through it. It's a good document. So it's great to look through.
I also noticed that uh, this, this plan is identified as a draft plan.
Yep.
And I think that's important to, to note. And it's important to note that is you came to us with your vision, with your plan, asking for our input. We've had the opportunity, we do have the opportunity to form that vision, help you form that vision. So thank you for, for not bringing us the final plan, but the, for the draft.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the early items that we identified early on is that communication and presenting this.
Okay. Here, here's a question. This is dealing with the uh, Sturman plan.
Yep.
PUD plan that's in place. It talks about the malt easement.
Hmm.
Could somebody explain to me what that means?
Sally, Sally probably has a better history than I do, so.
So on the western side of the Sturman property, uh, Carol and Eddie Sturman had established a conservation easement on about eighty acres that encompasses the Trout Creek area. That has now been sold to a private individual. And uh, two homes have been built and that is the maximum uh, amount of development that can occur. And I'm sorry, I don't know the, the acronym. It's an acronym, M A L T, T. But it's land trust is the last two words. Um, so it's uh, been under a conservation easement for at least ten years, maybe longer.
That's great. That's great. Glad, glad to hear that.
Yeah. And, and when the Sturman PUD is amended, we will recommend that the eighty acres of the conservation easement be removed because there is no uh, additional development associated with that.
Okay. Thank you. That, that's a good, great segue into my next comment, which is to look at how to preserve uh, the areas of steep slope for forty percent.
Yep.
As, as we are all aware of this particular bar, bar, this has a very steep areas. It also has some very unique landforms.
Yep.
Three sisters.
Yep.
Uh, um, just to the east of the area that Sally just talked about. It should be protected and preserved as well, as well as Trout Creek, but Trout Creek is part of that easement. So that will look at expanding that conservation easement to the east to include the three sister formations. And then on the east side of the north side of the campus, there's another area closer to the water tank site that is also steep and has some significant uh, land.
Yeah.
As well. And I, I'd also like to encourage you to use this as an opportunity to start working with uh, the fire department in the city and develop, helping develop the Willim Park Community Fire Protection, Fire Protection Mitigation Plan. We have a regional plan, we have a county plan, but we need a community plan. And this would be a, a good segue into uh, doing.
One thing Larry to add to that is that the ministry of the Bible college have actually done a fire mitigation plan.
Okay.
And they've worked um, with a consultant to do that. And that's something that I know that they'd probably be willing to share too.
As a community, we need one too. So maybe we can look at yours as well.
Maybe, of course.
We talked a little bit about Sturman Parkway. Uh, that I'd like to ask you to. That I'd like to ask you to at least consider that that particular parkway be designated for public emergency access. I think, I'm not going to ask you to make a city street or city road, but I think as a emergency access in time of wildfire, that provides another avenue of escape for the neighborhoods in this area as well as the campus.
And that was part of our discussion that we had recently is how do, how do we accommodate those needs? And that was something that we discussed very thoroughly and the ministry and the Bible College are fully on board with looking at what that management plan means and what that means for Sturman Parkway as an emergency access.
It would be a great access easement to the south for the neighborhood students or and for Kelly to get out.
Thank you, Larry. I appreciate you looking out for me.
That Larry, just, just for some background, as part of the discussion we had about a month ago was how do we meet the needs of both the ministry and the campus, but then also the city with that road? And what does that mean, you know, regardless of its public or private? Is what are the key things that we need to address to make that, that work, right? That union work. And so emergency management was a big piece that we identified and that was very much discussed and with Christie's and myself and, and Sally and her team and identified that that makes sense, right? And they want to work with you to do that. And they want to work with the community to, to deal with those things. And equally it was, what is the, what are the consequence of? If it's private, what does that mean for the police department? Cause they can't monitor it. How do they deal with that? And so AWM and the Bible College talked a lot about their internal security services and what they have so that you don't overburden the police department. So that's another piece too, that they've looked a lot into.
I think, I think there's a theme right here between that conversation is the fact that it's community. And you all are part of our community. We are part of you. And it's important that we work together to facilitate the needs of our community as a whole.
Absolutely.
That's what I hear in that conversation. Thank you.
I'll, I'll continue on. This might be a good time to mention that as I read through some of those early action items, I saw a lot of NES influence there, but I also saw. I, I also saw a lot of words like partnership, quality of life of the community, acknowledge Woodland Park and preserving the natural beauty, engage the local community, provide a plan for, for a unified campus, infrastructure, so on and so forth. So those things really ringing the bell with me. Very important thing, and I heard Carol talk about that is, is that in our envision plan, 2030 plan, we, we went beyond just having the infrastructure to provide water and wastewater to your site. But we also talked about that we have a limited water resource in our community. And we only have a set amount of water. It may last us 40 years, but as planners, we need to be thinking about how, 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 how are we going to allocate that?
Right.
And we have a good system in place already. But we got, as a community, we have to work and prioritizing how that water is used. So again, in your vision plan, please address capacity and the limited water supply to know how this project fits in with that. There may be a water budget, community priorities, so on and so forth.
What, in response to that Larry, again, a lot of this is looking at analysis from a perspective of what can we give tangible results on, right? With it being a vision plan, sometimes giving a hard number to those things is difficult, but we encourage throughout the document is that you continue to look at as you move forward, both from a development, both and from the infrastructure perspective related to the city, what that means and how you can achieve those things. Because without, without water, you can't develop, right? Without, without power, without wastewater, those are all things that as you move forward, constantly evaluate that and look at that and create those plans that, that can better give you an idea of that, that perspective forward.
You'll be in competition with many other uses for that water.
One of the other, my, one of the last questions I've got, you can address this. There, there seems to be part of your vision that you're missing. Okay? I, I, I don't see an area for a competitive active sports program.
Well, I, I might have to talk to him about that because with the, the average student age being 40, I'm 40. I tried playing football over Thanksgiving and that didn't go too well. So my back hurt for a while.
We, we've got to be able to help the state out.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, this is Catherine, Catherine Nigga. Oh, are you done Larry? Oh, okay. Never mind. You've finished Larry. I thought you were done. I apologize.
Is that all right, John?
What's up?
Give me three minutes.
I didn't say it again.
Could you give me three more minutes to finish up?
You've got, okay. Your three somehow always gets stretched.
I know. It's always a stretch. Well, you know, you and I, I mentioned you used right words, placemaking, community linkage. The linking of the two, two campuses is very important. And as I read through the vision, I realized I was dealing with a college. And anywhere in here, I don't see where the educational facilities are going to be located. Is that part of the ministry or how, how, how does the education fit in?
Well, they currently have that in place. The Bible College is currently in place. And at this time, just with the current capacities and studies they've done, I think that facility is where they want it to be. So that, that's will remain where it's at. It's a lot of this, if you look is about, they, they have the kind of facilities for that, but they don't have the, the items they need for housing, that are the needs for on campus. You know, bookstores and those types of things. And I think that seemed to be a common thread in a lot of the discussions we had is housing, right? What does that mean? And how does that impact the market? So that was something that was very early unidentified and addressed. But I think the current, at this point, that current campus facility, that growth that they think that they have, the college itself.
Up to 4,000 students.
That's 30 years from now. So we'll talk in 30 years.
That, that's a great segue because I, I recognize and the community has recognized the issue of residential and housing and the impact that has had on our community and it could have. What I've seen is an attempt to provide some answers for that through this project. And I just want to say, thank you. We're taking the lead to, to address that particular issue because that's very important for us to.
I, I would say I can't take the thanks on that. I think their team, they've built a great team that they've identified that. And then now it's how we move that forward effectively without just saying, hey, we're going to do housing. Here's what we're going to do, you know, like I, I would want to give kudos to their team for thinking about that and having that in their mind already when we've already, when we first approached them.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Question I've got for you guys, how much more time do you need to finish this up? Uh, we're coming up on the first hour and we still got another second half to do yet for stuff that we've got to have on that. Do we have any idea how much longer you, you need to finish this?
We're, we're done from our perspective. I, again, if there's more feedback, I welcome it. If not, we're always available for questions.
This, this could be an annual thing that we could do every, every year, expand it a little bit and, and keep the vision going.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great point. As I kind of close up is that we do identify that they continue to look at this vision plan as they move forward. What does it mean in the perspective of 30 years? Cause it's easy to say 33, 30 years now, we think we may have 4,000 students here, but that could change, right? It could be 2,000. It could be different. We, but continually updating this, taking time to look at what the capacities are as the campus, the current capacities of the city, the county and understanding as you move forward. So it's meant to be fluid. It's meant to, to evolve over time. But again, we thank you for letting us present this. Your, your feedback is important and I know it's very important to the ministry and the Bible College. So we appreciate that. And as we get closer, we'd love to kind of import as much of this as we can reasonably. And then hopefully make it a final draft here soon and over there, share it with everybody.
I thank you. Thank you so much.
May I ask a question, John, before we're finished?
Sure.
Thank you. When?
When?
For housing, when?
So we're, as I mentioned, we are going to work within the purview of the approved PUD that they have now on what we're calling the South Campus.
Yes.
So they're moving forward that the goal, depending, I know that there's some changes in planning that, that are happening that we are going to have to adapt to. But the goal is to try to move there by April. If we can get through the planning process, get everything together and, but that again is a goal. But that's something that we're looking at is working within the purview of the previous, the approved PD that we have now and creating site development plans.
Of 22.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. John, can I, John, can I ask one or make a comment real quick and then I promise to stop and you can call your meeting.
Very good.
So having evacuated my house three times in 20 years, please, please do a really good study on your fire mitigation and the fire, um, wild, wild land and everything. Cause it's not a matter of when, it's a matter of if.
Right.
Up here.
Yep.
So just please take that into consideration with your draft.
And they, they've completed that. So.
Yeah, well, it's probably a moving target. So just keep in mind that it's not set in stone for me, please. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. We're going to take a 10 minute break so that we can regroup. Everybody that came, thank you. We shall do this again and we'll reconvene at 10 after eight and finish the other half of our, of our meeting. Thank you. Bless you. We're going to start up here shortly. So if you'd like to take a seat or continue your discussions outside, we appreciate it. Sally, are we ready to go again?
We're, we're just clearing the room.
Okay.
Yeah, folks are welcome to stay, but we're getting close. We'll let you know. All right, John, I think we can get started now.
Well, that's, we got to go back to and start to make sure we got a quorum and that call to order and roll.
Yes. Would you like me to call the roll?
Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty. John DeBeau.
Here.
Ken Hartsfield.
Here.
Lee Brown.
Here.
Al Bunge.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
Larry Larson. And Sean Marie Nielsen.
Here.
And for the record, Ellen Kerik is absent with an excused absent. We do have a quorum with seven members present.
Thank you. I have to add a, I have to add a note to Ellen. She is in New Orleans and she's at the wedding of her daughter, which is taking place at this time. Okay?
And Mr. Chair, if we can welcome our newest member to the planning commission, Sean Marie Nielsen. And Sean, if you'll say, introduce yourself and say a few words about your experience.
Um, I am Sean Marie Nielsen. Oh, let's see. I'm glad we got it. I am Sean Marie Nielsen. I live in 101 Clover Court here in Woodland Park. Thank you guys for allowing my application and for allowing me to be able to sit on the board. Uh, one of the things I had mentioned earlier is I'm coming up on 23 years for working with El Paso County. Worth working with El Paso County. I've also worked with El Pamar and some other generous donators like that. I've worked a lot of fire and extensive management litigation and floods and, and, and all of the preparing things that El Paso County has seen. And so I'm really happy to kind of get to know you guys and, and, and to get to work. If Larry doesn't steal all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, at, at this point, do we need an approval for the minutes for the last meeting?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye? Okay. Okay. We're going to item four, public hearing. This is a consider an ordinance, amending Title 18 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code to address changes to family child hair care homes as required by recent legislation. And I think it's another thing that showed, it was on House Bill 21 dash 1222. Sally, you want to bring everybody up to date on that?
Thank you very much. Yes. And I'm very pleased that our city attorney, Nina Williams, is here this evening because she is the one who drafted this ordinance. And it does now have an ordinance number. It is ordinance 1409. And this is the result of a legislative action this past summer where the state passed a new law that said that family childcare homes in residential areas could function without any local zoning regulations dealing with their operations. So as a result, the city since 2010 has had codes in place for small home daycares or home childcares. So essentially this ordinance is eliminating the local legislation and that the daycares will answer to the state licensing process and will be allowed to have up to 12 children per single family home or per dwelling. So it's really very straightforward. The state is preempting local control. And as a result, it has to be eliminated from Title 18, our zoning chapter. So we'll answer any questions or comments.
Sally, this is for the operation, correct?
Correct.
You might explain that.
Well, you, we still, the local control still has the ability that if, for example, a remodel is being done, like a new bathroom needs to be added. They still have to meet the building codes and the city, the applicable city regulations. So we do want to add one word to the section.
Section 18.33.155A and applicable, the last clause, all applicable local zoning and building regulations.
Thank you, Nina.
Thank you.
So the purpose of this regulation is to comply with new state regulation.
Yes.
The only concern I had is that we were dealing with children in childcare, but now as we're getting older, we're thinking more about adult daycare. In fact, we have one in our community. And I thought maybe this would be a good opportunity to integrate adult daycares with child. But the primary purpose is to comply with state statute. Let's still go there. We can deal with that with the COVID manner.
Mr. Chair, this is Sean Nielsen. I have a question. Um, is it a matter of while business hours are running that they have to have certain, you know, they have to meet the state's requirements or is this at an all time?
This is under their control period.
As long as they remain a facility that's, that's taking care of children.
Is a family childcare limited to 12?
Right. But what happens when they decide they don't want to do that anymore? Are they obligated to then tell us and then revert back? No? Okay.
And I just clarified, there's the family.
And I just clarify, there's the family, this childcare center, which is more commercial than the family childcare home, just so everyone's clear. Um, and it needs to be where the person lives themselves and, and they're treated as, um, they're, that use needs to be treated just like any residential use would be treated in that area. And then, yeah, they just need to follow the state licensing and it's less than twenty-four hours. So it's not, you know, sleepover. It's, it's, um, it's, you know, it's less than twenty-four hours of care.
Okay.
Per day.
Nina, I, I had a few questions.
Yeah.
Sally's working, like she figured I would. Okay, uh, first off, just to, uh, I guess a typo or something, um, in the modification to eighteen oh six one oh seven B. Um, for the purpose of providing, are we using the term daycare? What do we want? Because daycare, I'm not sure it was ever, was used other, others, they talk about supervision and such, but in any event, it just says for the purpose of providing day for not more. So is, do we, do we write daycare or want to use some other terminology?
I thought, I see, uh, twenty-four hours of care per day. Is that what you mean?
No, what it says is family child, family childcare home shall mean a private residence in a single unit dwelling or dwelling unit in a multiple unit dwelling.
Oh, yes, I see it. Sorry.
Providing day.
Thank you. I apologize. That was, um, so we may, uh, I guess Sally will recommend amendments for two purposes. Thank you for catching that. I apologize for that.
So daycare?
Yes, I apologize about that.
All right. Um, second, um, is eighteen oh six point one oh seven C still existence or not still existence?
No, it struck.
Okay, then shouldn't it be shown as being entered and struck or a specific reference made that is struck? Cause what this said, I mean, it, it's, at least it's ambiguous in my mind. It's eighteen oh six one oh seven concerning different child cares hereby amended to read as follows. We have A that's modified, B crossed out and replaced, and C is just not addressed.
I see it struck.
Do we? After B, it goes next goes to section three, different part.
Oh, but C is up ahead, so we just struck everything. Um, the, the old's B and C are struck.
Oh, come, sorry, and C it's in, all right, the, okay. All right, I'm sorry. It's, you ordered, B came before C, so I didn't see.
Uh, yeah, we, I know, I figured that it was easier to show everything was struck and then the new, but, um, but yeah.
Okay, all right, um. The point, actually, the, the point was made in comments earlier and also, also in the ordinance that um, what we're talking about here, private, or sorry, family childcare home is one, it's a private residence. But it's a private residence where the provider is in fact the resident. And I think that, did that, did that get preserved in our statutory language?
Let's see, make sure I did that.
It is a private residence, but it doesn't say it's a private residence where the provider is the one doing the care. So I think it does not apply, the, the state statute doesn't apply. If, if I rent my house out to somebody else to come do it, that's, that's more like a commercial childcare center. It's not addressed for the state.
Yeah, you're correct. So the state statute, um, defines family childcare home as a state licensed childcare facility up to twelve, which is operated by a person who resides in the same dwelling where the care is provided.
Say that.
We, I have it in my whereas clause, that's the state, the state law.
Yeah, but it's not in the, you see, I say it's not, no, no, but it's, it's not put into the code. We need to build that into the definition for family childcare.
If we wanna be more clear, um, imagine we residence in a single unit.
Cause that's the only part that's gonna make it codification.
No, I know. It's just, uh, has to be, I know, it, it's to be more clear for anyone reading it. It should be that versus, you know, going to the state and then coming back. So for, that will, it, a good amendment would be for that same where we said providing daycare, adding daycare in.
If, if it, if it helps, here's, here's the wording to the state.
Oh, yeah, I used, oh.
Got it?
Yeah, it's in my whereas clause, so, um, which is operated by a person who resides in the same dwelling where the care is provided. So.
So it sounds like you just have to reside. So, so what Lee was saying is you could, the owner could rent it out to somebody, that renter could live there.
Yes.
And have a childcare.
Yeah, I mean, ownership, yeah, it's our leasing and living there, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so what, is there some recommended language you have?
Yes, so family childcare home shall mean a private residence in a single unit dwelling or dwelling unit in a multiple unit dwelling for the purpose of providing daycare. Which is operated by a person who resides in the same dwelling where the care is provided.
So that would be in point oh six, point one oh seven A, you would add that language there? O and B?
No, it's in, it's, it needs to be in B, because
Okay.
Because one oh seven A is the commercial childcare center, which isn't necessarily a residence.
Once again, Nina, that applies with the statute?
Yes, and it's to make it more clear, cause later on we say they need to be, um, comply with state regulations and you can't comply with state regulations without it being your place of residence, but why not make it clear? If you have a question, other people have a question, so.
No, well, no, actually.
Right, so I agree.
We don't put it in, we, we could authorize it more broadly than the state authorized, but I don't think that was the intent here.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate the amendment. Yeah, you're right.
Okay, one, one last thing, and it's, and I'm not sure I'm recommending, we just asked if the explicit policy decision was made on this. In this, in the statute, it says that foregoing does not restrict an authority that would be like a city, city uh, ability to prohibit on a case-by-case basis, the operation and immediately adjacent residences of two or more large family childcare homes as that term is defined and it goes on. Did we deliberately, I mean, we, we do not reserve the right to regulate these larger ones next to each other. The state authorizes us to do.
Yeah, we didn't have that. I did, I did. It was that we don't have that restriction now in our code and I thought it might confuse, um, to add that restriction, but it's, you know, that, so, yeah.
Okay, all right, as long as that's intended deliberate policy choice. Okay.
For licensing, licensing purposes, is there, um, a requirement on square footage per attendee? In other words, if you've got twelve kids there, is there a maximum or minimum amount of square footage to accommodate twelve kids?
Yes, the state licensing guidelines and requirements, you must have so many square feet. I can't quote it for you.
Sure, but it is per child.
There is about four or five hundred pages of childcare regulations.
Okay.
There's.
Yeah, I referenced those when I, I mean, I looked, I looked in Control F that when I was writing this to make sure I was complying, but it's very, it's very intense.
And those were in existence already, correct?
Yes, and they also have to have a certain amount of area outside for a play area that is fenced. There's also a requirement for a fire inspection on an annual basis. So the health and safety of the operation should be well managed through the licensing process.
Have we had anyone come forward and say, oh, good, now I can bring in six more kids?
Carol, can you hear me?
Yeah, gotcha.
Carol, there's only, then there, and the, there's also the same old parking requirements. Only two cars can be out there for a total of the employees or attendees and they can drop people off to go there, but can, no more than five minutes. So we're not gonna have like, uh, the rentals are with sixteen cars in the front yard.
Good deal. Okay.
In the staff report under background, first paragraph, Sally, uh, it talks about, uh, this makes a family childcare home of twelve children that are used in all zones except. And then it says, read zoning development permits, public notices and building code inspections are no longer required for this use. But that does not, is not reflected in the ordinance, because does not all uses require zoning development?
No, we don't, will not be issuing a zoning development permit for these daycare homes.
Okay.
And, and, um, the reason, the building code, actually, it's the building code, um, occupancy. Change in occupancy is trumped by this legislation.
Oh, about the unrelated occupants?
No, it's more to do with, um, a residence has, um, ours, our, no, I'm looking at Ken. Uh, let me go the other way. It, a daycare is considered an educational institution. And so it, in the building code, if you have an institutional classification or occupancy, then many triggers, um, occur, like sprinkling your hole. That now has been eliminated.
Even in the commercial daycare center?
We're not talking commercial. Yeah, totally different. Commercial does have to be.
This is just strictly residential. Gotcha.
If you look at, um, page three of the ordinance, if you look at page three of the ordinance, we kept the childcare center that says is, and then we added the family childcare home. So, yeah, it's only for those residential homes the person lives in the residence versus a commercial, um, these.
So I, I will tweak that paragraph to be more clear, um, because there will be building inspections. If, for example, they need to, uh, modify their plumbing, then they'll pull a building permit and there will be a plumbing inspection.
We, we talked about the parking places required and the zoning development has historically been the purpose of the instrument in which we know we have two places there. So I, I would encourage that we still have the zoning development, just to check those applicable zoning requirements.
I don't believe we can do that.
Not if we don't do it in a residential use, that the state statute is very clear.
And, and our requirement for residential parking is to have two off-site. So that would be reviewed as part of the, um, original building of every residential unit.
If this facility was new build, you would go through a ZDP process, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Since this is a public hearing, don't we have to open for public comment as well?
We do. Our chairman, I'm sure, will.
One of, one of the problems with this is the normal, the normal thing we go through doesn't really apply. In other words, staff's presentation. But, but, but the public hearing is required. Okay, do we have anybody that signed up for the public hearing?
There is no one, Mr. Chair.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak?
I don't see anybody rushing to the podium.
Is there anybody on the internet that wants to speak?
We don't see any hands up.
Anybody left on the, uh, planning committee that wanna speak? Sorry. So at this point in time.
No, no, John, I give me something to say.
Yeah. About your judge.
Commissioner Larson would like to comment.
He doesn't have three minutes this time.
I will talk as long as I want to talk.
Go ahead, Larry.
Thanks, John. I, I have a, a problem uh, with the state dictating what local governments can do as far as zoning and land use decisions. It, it's just historically has been under local control. But I know that there has been an effort through many other states, certainly in Colorado, to interject state interest, uh, in providing for certain uses. And I certainly agree with the philosophy that childcare establishments, family childcare home should be in residential areas and there should be limited, uh, roadblocks, roadblocks, let that happen in the state as interject their, uh, intent and, and desire to do that or the control of local governments. Just, just, just a statement to say, but, uh, again, I will support this, uh, this ordinance because I think it's, it's a good thing to do. I just wanted to say, I'm very concerned about when the state interjects.
Larry, the problem is, I don't think anybody disagrees with you. But this is an edict coming down from the state that we're trying to make the best of.
I understand that, John.
And we're just gonna have to live with this until they either changes or other parts of our government change.
I understand.
That's, that's the frustration on it. I don't understand why the word family is in there if you can hire somebody to run it. Where does the word family come in? Is that just thrown in there to make it feel good or what?
It, it, it has significance. Um, sorry, the word, that definition comes from the state law, family childcare home. So I guess they're, you know, they're trying to be consistent with that. And, um, just to, um, I, you know, I practice most of my, what I do is zoning law. And I don't disagree with you, Larry. I teach a graduate course and we explain that zoning law is local concern and there's, you know, um, state concern. Um, this is very unique for the state to, you know, start saying that, um, zoning is, um, this part of zoning is not legal at all. However, um, you know, the state, you know, I mean, the state, uh, law is, is clear that when, once the legislature says that something is no longer of state control, whether or not we have this in, this code change, you would need to follow it. But I know you'll know that, just wanna, um, I represent a few communities and that, that sentiment has been shared, um, throughout different areas of the state.
Nina, this is not for twenty-four hour nursing care. This is daycare only, correct?
Correct. Under twenty-four hours and for children. And in the home, in a home where the person who's operating it resides.
But it's not for, for, for kids to be there or for child's, children to be there twenty-four hours a day?
No, the definition is clear. It's under twenty-four hours a day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are, are any of you in an effort to get C cap into some of these homes? That's the Child Care Assistance Program. That is really heavily governed by state.
I think the impetus is, is the fact that more and more people are needing, you know, childcare. So the state is saying there's a need. That's, that's what I've heard. I don't know if that's an ancillary, but I haven't, I haven't heard that, um, reasoning.
It's gonna be an interesting thing to see what neighborhoods they go into. It'll be interesting. I'm sure we'll read some articles in the paper.
I have to say, uh, I do, I represent a lot of towns and cities and our firm does, and we haven't seen a rush, um. For it, I think, if someone wanted to do this, they would have either went through the old process or now they'll just have less, you know, restrictions. But, you know, that's anecdotal.
Nina, is there a chance that the state's requirements are stricter than ours?
I'm, I'm not, uh, yes, they are. Yeah, I think so.
They may have stricter requirements than we have as, as a city.
I think to, this is Sally, and to obtain your license, uh, childcare license, it's very rigorous, uh, application process.
Okay. Thank you. We would, uh, eh, finish up discussion and encourage a motion. Don't everybody talk at once?
I, I'd move if we're clear on what the language is that we've been adopting for one oh seven B.
Oh, three, that's three amendments. Yeah, one of, yeah, okay.
You're making a motion with the modifications made.
Nina had some language. I'm gonna try to draft for her.
For the definition. So, uh, if we're, the proper, a proper motion would be to recommend, um, to city council ordinance number
Fourteen oh nine.
Fourteen oh nine, amending Title eighteen of the Woodland Park Municipal Code to address changes to the family cop childcare home as required by state legislation. And it's House Bill twenty-one dash, um, twelve twenty-two with the following amendments, amending, uh, from the draft, amending the, um, eighteen point oh six, one oh seven B to state as follows. Family childcare home shall mean a pri, oh, the amendment, but I'll just read the whole thing if it helps. Family childcare home shall mean a private residence in a single unit dwelling or dwelling unit in a multiple unit dwelling for the purpose of providing daycare, which is operated by a person who resides in the same dwelling where the care is provided. For not more than twelve children, thank you, for periods of less than twenty-four hours of care per day. And then the second amendment would be to amend eighteen point thirty-three point one five five. And I'll just read the whole sentence so everyone's clear. A, family childcare homes must be licensed by the state and comply with all applicable state regulations promulgated by the Colorado Department of Human Services and all applicable local zoning and building regulations.
I will move to approve the ordinance as amended as Nina had just stated, but I did have one more question. It just dawned on me. This could also occur in multifamily in an apartment building.
Yes.
Yeah, if you look at three, though, you started there.
So, so my motion is to move to approve as amended.
Just before we went.
Can we have a second before we discuss?
Just as a further suggestion before, does it work just to say in that sentence? Because it was, it's confusing, what's the antecedent way it proposed it? After a multiple dwelling unit for the purpose of the resident providing daycare for not more than 12 children and for periods not less than 24, does that get there without?
That's, that's clearer.
I thought it was in the shorter, at least fewer words.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's better. We were trying to merge two things.
So I'll withdraw my first motion, but I will resubmit it as amended.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, we got it, we got a first and a second. Did you call for the question?
Yes. Okay. So we'll start with Hartsfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Bunge.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Handebo.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously and this ordinance will move forward to the city council agenda, first reading on January 6th and the public he, hearing on January 20th. So thank you.
And our schedule is, is what now, we're done for December, what do we have in January planned?
We are done for December and so your next meeting will be the second Thursday in January, which is 6, 7 to 13th. So that means this is Sally's last planning commission meeting.
Sally? What, what, what's the date of your block party?
My block party? Actually, the city is going to host an open house for me on January 20th. So you're welcome to attend at 5:30 and then we'll have a presentation during the meeting at 7 o'clock.
We can cry then. I'm waiting. Yeah.
Sally, you got any other reports for us?
I sure do, I would like to, very happy to introduce Karen Schmick. And Karen is here, the new planning director for the city of Woodland Park and this has been her fourth day on the job. So she has been drinking through the fire hose.
Just drinking.
So, good evening, it's delightful to be here, Sally's doing a great job of trying to do, I joke, the Vulcan mind meld of like 30 years of history and nuances, I'm doing the best I can to absorb it. But, yeah, very glad to be here in Woodland Park and be a part of the community, so thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Brings a tremendous amount of experience to Woodland Park and is very excited to be in a small town and be able to make a difference in our community as we move forward. And the most fascinating thing about Karen is that she and I both graduated from the same high school in North Borough, Massachusetts. We're we're both Algonquin graduates.
I'm an Air Force kid, so I actually technically have four high schools and we moved October of my senior year, so I'm in, under a technicality there as an Algonquin graduate.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else, Sally?
No, sir, yeah, other than happy holidays and I'll see you next year on January 20th.
Everybody, you have a great Christmas, a safe Christmas and a happy holiday.
Thank you.
We're looking for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Till next year.
Thank you, thank you, John.